We are live here.
I do not some breathing, no.
Yeah, you have a president.
Okay, he was supposed to come pregnant. Are we ready, Angie?
Yeah, we're live.
Okay, it's uh, November seventeenth, hard to believe. But we'll all get the meeting started. We all please rise and uh, for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Uh, we'll start like normal. Any public input on agenda items? Anything have, anybody have anything you want to say about an agenda item? There'll be a public input for anything at the end of the meeting, but this is just agenda items. Seeing them will move on. Jason, or excuse me, Superior Card Three. Christie. Snuck in front of the highway this morning. You snuck in front of the highway this morning.
I did.
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning. Please state your name and title, please, for the record.
Christie Johnson. I am the uh, Drug Court Coordinator and then also the Director of the Marshall County Drug and Alcohol Program.
So tell us a little bit about what you're asking for.
Well, we were awarded a grant through the Indiana Office of Court Services Problem Solving Court Grant in the amount of thirty-seven hundred dollars. Um, it helps to support transportation costs, incentives, drug screens, um, educational workbooks, um, incentive gift cards that we give to our participants when they're doing well and custom graduation.
So we're just basically approving acceptance. This is correct. Anybody have any questions? That was pretty straightforward. Any discussion or anything? Do I have a motion?
So moved and say it.
Motion made second to approve the acceptance of the Superior Three Problem Solving Drug Court Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Jason.
Morning.
Morning. State your name and title also, Jason.
Jason Peters, Marshall County Highway Department.
Thank you.
I would be happy to start out with.
First few permits we have, uh, Bright Speed is the first batch. Uh, number one is six and Juniper is Sixth Road, which is six B. That is aerial placement of fiber. Uh, Bluebird Trail, east of Lilac, it's a center township. That is a bore for conduit. And King Road and Alley, south of tenth, that's center township, also aerial and a bore for conduit.
Motion to approve the permits as presented.
Second. Motion made second to approve the three bright, bright speed permits. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next one is Frontier and uh, we have one there. It's Sunset. The Washington to Sunset Avenue. It's a bore in center township.
Move to approve the permit request from Frontier.
Second. Motion made second to approve the permit request from Frontier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the next one, and the last one is for Nipco. It's forth the beach to county line, term of township. It's a dig. Uh, it's excavation on south side of right of way for a new two its service.
To approve the uh, request by Nipco as presented.
Second. Motion made second to approve the Nipco request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, Bridge One Yule Trail, brim setters will be setting up the crane today. Uh, box beams are to be delivered on Tuesday. Uh, upper section of wing walls to be poured once vents have been set in place and ground. Uh, Bridge Two Thirty-two, we had a walk-through scheduled on the tenth. That got changed due to some conflicts on scheduling, so that'll go to the twenty-first. Uh, Bridge Eighty-eight, they're starting the right-of-way engineering. Uh, Mill Pond Trail for the uh, Mill Pond Dam Improvements. Uh, company that had that has sold, so now I'm talking with a new owner on that. Uh, trying to get that rescheduled with him as far as keeping the dates that he was supposed to, which was the end of October is when that was supposed to be done. So literally we're trying to work that out to still be able to get that done yet this year. Um, EV Grant, we have received the final documentation that was needed from Martel, so we're in the process of paying the final invoice, submitting for the reimbursements and completing the final closeout documentation. Oh yeah. Uh, pavement striving, the final tracing checklist has been completed. Um, that's ready to be submitted for the contract services. Uh, Violytics, we ran, I would say a little bit over seventy-five percent of the roads as we speak right now. Uh, we should be completing that this week, hopefully. Um, once all said and done, then I shared a little bit more information with you. I did bring in a couple brochures to you today to show you. We are in that six, seven and eight on the higher sides. So been very happy with the reviews that's um, did for us and I should say what it's showing that we have made progress in the county. Uh, roadwork, patch and potholes, um, working on gravel roads, cutting brush, working on the twenty-twenty-six road program. Stockpiling stone for next year with the additional funds for stone, uh, working on long-term equipment replacement or upgrading of equipment. Uh, community crossings, twenty-twenty-six, uh, will be closing that out hopefully this week with the final documentation. The twenty-twenty-six have been submitted. Uh, the federal call, uh, NOFA, which opened this month, uh, submitting for bridge number twenty-five forty on Michigan Road over railroad uh, will be a rehabilitation. Uh, I do have a financial commitment letter for the Board of President to sign, or Board of Commissioners to sign. I did think we wanted to go ahead and go through with submitting that bridge to this year on that federal call.
So you guys cover that bridge?
I am.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion to approve Commissioner or President of the Board signing? This federal call.
I move that we uh, allow the President to sign on behalf of the Board and approve submission of Bridge Two Twenty-five Forty on Michigan Road uh, for this year's federal call.
Second.
Motion been made the second to approve the uh, Commissioner, Board of Commissioner, President to sign uh, commitment letter on behalf of Bridge Twenty-five Forty on Michigan Road. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, RQAW, the last meeting was request approval to do on-call agreement of the intersection improvement studies located in South Michigan and Seventeenth slash Dewey Street. Uh, the agreement proposal was submitted on Friday. I just got that this morning. So I do apologize not for catching that earlier to get it out to you for review. I did send it to you guys and Sean. Um, the agreement proposal was for twenty thousand for the study on Dewey Street in South Michigan. Then there was thirty thousand as meeting for other county department projects as directed by Board of Commissioners, so the total was for fifty.
So is that coming out of, where's that money coming from?
Um, the study would come out of Q and Bridge for us on the twenty, so the other thirty thousand then would be based upon what you guys feel as far, and doesn't necessarily even have to be the Highway Department, how I read it. It could be any department in the county, but they basically put a thirty thousand for you to be able to use that money on anything else is how I took that contract.
And that would need to come back to us for, for additional action. So we're just, we'd just be making the commitment for a twenty thousand dollar project for South Michigan and Dewey, so.
Right?
Yeah. Angie has that contract there, so if you want to sign it today or take it into review until Sean reviews it.
You got any, you got any? While we can prove pending.
Yes.
Sean's review when he gets back.
Yeah, I've, I've seen it. I'm comfortable with it. I, I talked to them before they uh, sent the contract over. It, it, it's what we're looking for, I believe.
Are, are we up against any other timelines with the study? I don't remember.
I don't think so.
No.
No.
So there, there's no reason to get over or push fast, fast.
I think we, if, 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 if the board so desires to approve it, the twenty thousand part, uh, pending lawyer's review. I mean, we'd have the ball rolling.
Okay.
You'll be back. Are you coming with that?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the, the agreement, the initial agreement for the study of Dewey and Street in South Michigan for the amount of twenty thousand dollars with RQAW, uh, upon uh, review of the county attorney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Copier, request for approval for purchase, um, from U.S. Business Systems. The total is nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, we'll, we'll be requesting a transfer from subcontract services to office equipment in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-one. Um, and the proposal would need signed for that to go ahead and move forward with.
Is that all three of us or just the President?
I think it's just the President or one signature. And I don't even know if it has to be your signature, it could just approve them for me to sign for them.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing was just letting it be known, correct Angie?
Yeah, any agreements have to be, have to be approved.
Give Jason the permission to sign.
Yep. All right. Well, then I move that we uh, uh, empower Mr. Peters to sign on behalf of the county um, on the uh, approval of purchase from U.S. Business Systems, a new copier in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Second. Motion made second to uh, allow our department head, Jason Peters, to sign on behalf of the Commissioners uh, purchase a new uh, copier, amount of ninety-three hundred and sixty-three dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, twenty-twenty-six annual bids, those will be advertised the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth and open them December first after Commissioners' meeting. You're okay with that, like approval for that to be done and open?
So how much, how much stone are we talking here? Cause I, I seen an email this morning on that. We talking twenty, thirty ton?
One more time now.
How much stone are we looking at putting out there as a twenty, thirty ton?
Hold it. Can we, can we do the twenty-six bid approval first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I was looking down. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
I was going down to the Park Department.
I was panicking. I was like, where does that come into this picture?
It's on me. It's on me.
I'll, I'll move that we, uh, let the Highway Department to uh, advertise the annual bids for materials.
Second.
Motion made second to allow the Highway Department to uh, hook through with their annual bids for twenty-twenty-six. Uh, advertising on seventeenth and twenty-fourth with bid opening on the December first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, kayak walks in parking. I had spoke with Dev about adding some limestone to Hickory and Peach Road. Um, just to give them access to get down to the kayaks on the uh, sides there. I mean, you guys understand how the kayaks really park right there and stuff. Um, she had requested um, like ten ton at each location to be able to put some limestone and add to those trails. I went out and looked at those. They're well within our right-of-ways. Um, and it would help in those situations right there. I think the big thing was the Parks Department wanted the Board's approval to go ahead and proceed with them. Plus those had to be done by twenty-twenty-five. As far as the grant side, if I'm not mistaken, for funding.
Uh, okay, so that's being paid for by the, the stones being paid for by the Parks Department.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion, comments? Do I have a motion?
Still moved and second.
Motion made second to uh, allow Jason to work with uh, the Park Department on some stone for these kayak launches. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
What we got?
All right. Uh, question real quick. I saw uh, earlier up your uh, statement here that we're working on pothole repair. Um, just for the, the public's uh, benefit, um, how is our uh, new pothole patcher uh, being used and uh, um, how those results turn it out?
We're trying to use it every single day we can. And as far as the results of what it has done, it's been outstanding.
All right.
Um, I know Stan made a comment a while back in just conversations. I would agree with him a hundred percent. If we could get away from coal patch completely and use that, that would be the ticket. Um, I know a lot of people probably want to see that on some of the worst roads. But in theory, um, unless it really justifies fixing it, it doesn't justify using that machine on that type of. Um, going forward, we're always looking at better roads or roads that we're going to be doing next year. Um, due to the fact that anything that's repaired and fixed on them, we're looking at long-term fixes, which benefit is when we do a long-term repair.
Right.
Um, once we get some of those other roads under control, it'll be the same process and eventually hopefully we're able to use that on just about any road in the county.
Okay. One of the benefits is when they get ready to do a chip and seal.
Hmm.
Or something's been paved or something does pop up, you don't have a little speed bump under it. I mean, it's level.
Yeah. The nice thing about it is you can, you can fix blemishes very easy with it. Um, we've all seen it, whether it's state highway, brand-new roads or whatever, you're going to have those type scenarios where things just happen. Um, you get an extreme freeze thaw. You're going to have those pop out. That is by far the best machine you could use to go back and repair and fix it. We've seen it done in the rain. Um, the day you guys was there, it was pouring rain.
Yep.
Those are still there today.
Yep.
Right. Okay, anything?
I, I, I just got one other question or maybe you already completed it. Uh, where are we sitting right now for asset management submission to ITAB?
Um, it has to be in by December first. We'll be submitting it.
Okay.
By December.
Did I get those emails to you besides like her?
Well, the only thing on that, technically those are two years. So like our asset managements that we submit, those are technically every two years. We have literally stuck to every year submitting everything updated. Um, so in hindsight is we do have that extra year and just literally sign and submit it, but then everything has to be current on the following year.
Okay.
But we just always tried to make it a point to do it each year.
Thanks, Jason. Anything else? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
EMA, Jack. Morning.
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 Jack Garner, EMA Director. Here to get two signatures on our FEMA projects for the tornadoes. Um, there's two different documents. The first is the damages for debris removal. So that one's going to be six thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and one cent, and we'll get seventy-five percent back on that. And then the second one is emergency services for four thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents, and we'll get seventy-five percent back on that one too. So we just need one signature on that to move forward and then we're done with our part and we can sit and wait for a check.
What is the second one called? First one's?
First one's debris removal. Second one is emergency services.
And where does that money go? Does it go back to general fund?
It's gonna, you want to take that?
It goes back into where we spend it.
Okay.
And most of it was general fund. There was some highway for debris removal, the Sheriff's Department for the emergency services, so that's where it goes back.
Okay. Thank you.
Are, are any of the other local agencies uh, getting similar reimbursements?
Yeah, so Bourbon was tied up on their project. They're getting a lot more than we are because of damages to buildings. Um, but one of the people managing their case got furloughed during the shutdown, so they were stuck behind, but um, they just had one little thing to finish up once they got back to work and they'll get theirs too.
So, and is this uh, you signing or the President of the Board signing?
Um, it's sign on behalf of Marshall County Commissioners, so.
All right. Well, then I move that we uh, um, approve the uh, two project completion and certification reports for um, was it debris removal and emergency services? All right. And the President signing on behalf of the county.
Second, that, motion made second to approve the two agreements with Homeland Security for the debris removal. Re, excuse me, reimbursement of debris removal and emergency management services uh, for the county, for the President signing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
Those two after meeting, Jack.
Good, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Grollick.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you.
I presented you, actually, John Grollick, Marshall County Fire. What I presented you was uh, for some leadership training. Um, I guess I want to preface, preface uh, one thing that when I make a presentation uh, on a project that the fire service is doing, this is at the request of the fire chiefs in this county. This is not something that I just come up with. So um, if there's ever any question about anything, please don't hesitate to ask. This is um, all the leadership training from the bottom up. So it involves all the members of every organization. So um, which is something that's kind of unique. This presenter is a nationally recognized uh, presenter that presents that. Um, the Fire Department Instructors Conference across the, the country. And um, she actually is a Battalion Chief from the Indianapolis Fire Department. But she has a doctor's degree in, in uh, organizational development. And um, her fee is three thousand dollars plus uh, expenses, which is mileage, one hundred and twenty-five miles plus lodging. So I think I put it at thirty-five hundred dollars. I've heard her before. She is very impressive, sends a pretty strong message. Actually uh, folks outside the fire service would benefit from listening to her presentation. Cause it uh, truly involves entire organization to, to build the strength of that organization. One of the things that happens in the fire services, most fire chiefs across the county are elected by their body. They really have no direct education on leadership. And uh, this kind of helps develop that uh, tool, if you will, for leadership. Be presenting two programs, uh, December twelfth and thirteenth, very similar to what Dr. David Griffin did for mental health training. Uh, be one in the evening on Friday and then Saturday mid-morning, four hours each.
Uh, where are you planning out? Where, where is this going to be held at?
We're hoping that it's going to be held at the uh, Lincoln Education Center here in Plymouth. They have an auditorium there that has uh, capacity of uh, maybe a hundred and fifty or so.
The uh, all the rank of fire departments, are they invited or just to leadership?
All the fire services invited, countywide.
Okay.
Do you be willing to open that up to law enforcement then too?
Uh, they'll be invited.
They'll be invited, okay.
I will tell you the mental health training we had. We had four officers from uh, Plymouth Police Department, one from Bourbon and uh, one from the Sheriff's Department. We had over a hundred folks that participated in that.
That's awesome. I've gotten good feedback from that, so I appreciate that.
You say you have?
I, yeah, I've gotten good feedback from that.
Good, good.
And I guess my question is, is I'm not really, it's not a comment on this program, but you're getting close to out of money.
I'm sorry?
You're getting close to out of money on that.
Uh, I've communicated with Angie and we've got uh, over twenty-six thousand dollars in there yet.
Is that my slide?
Twenty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-five thousand.
I just will make sure we get to proper.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
The, uh, the best. So your comments were all favorable. What happened?
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm favorable to this. We, we've had, with the training, with the mental health, we've had positive results from that. I got feedback from the training we just did concerning drones from some of the firefighters and uh, places in the county. Uh, they thought that was a net positive. Uh, the way it was set up was interesting, but it was a net positive overall and we got material from that for them to study from, uh, for their FAA license to fly the drone, so I, so far, I think we've been pretty successful with the training. I'm curious to see how this goes because anytime you can get leadership training for under ten thousand dollars and it doesn't require a forty-hour commitment.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're on the positive side, so I'd like to move forward with this and then we'll see how this works out for us and what kind of feedback we get. If it turns out to be valuable, see what else in the future we can put, kind of come up with.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Obviously, one of our big challenges going forward, especially with the fire service is uh, um, retention and attraction of, of new volunteers and having quality leadership is a big part of both of those things. And so I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this, so.
Regroupment and retention of fire services is uh, one of the largest obstacles that we deal with today. Uh, and the dwindling numbers of uh, young volunteers that uh, come in the fire service. Um, our Gen Xers are uh, more of that attitude, what's in it for me.
Yeah.
And uh, the old guys uh, have that understanding that, you know, how can we help our community? So uh, we're trying to build a uh, an educational program for young folks so that they can see the benefit of being a volunteer in their own community.
And feeling appreciated and empowered is a big part of that. And this seems like it's, that's just the kind of training that it's going to be.
Absolutely.
Yep. So I'll make the motion that we approve the uh, proposal from Mr. Grollick uh, for training, uh, leadership training for the uh, first responders in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion been made second to approve uh, Mr. Grollick's request uh, to provide a leadership training with uh, elite public safety consulting for the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Next, we have older adult services. Janice.
Good morning. Janice Holiday, I'm the director of the Marshall County Council on Aging. I'm here to present my third quarter claim for transportation. And in that, we had one hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-three in expenses. And we brought in nineteen thousand, sixty-seven dollars. That amount does include, we did sell one van for just over four thousand through the auction site at Bourbon. That leaves us net expenses of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six. So our claim would be to end up for the fifty-three eleven federal funds, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-three. State funds of fifteen thousand, that leaves us a local match of forty-eight thousand, one sixty-three. Some of our quarter stats, we had, we did seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine trips, which was up quite a bit from last quarter, a little over five hundred. We also had our out-of-county denials were up a good chunk, too, as well. We did get one of our recall vans fixed, the twenty-twenty-four. They finally got a fix for that, but we're still, we have three more that we're still waiting because they're twenty-two's and twenty-three's. For some reason, they don't have them yet. Just a side note, too, we did hold our senior expo in October. We had, actually had nine hundred and sixteen people sign in. So we're very confident we had over eleven hundred people there for that one-day event. Very well.
Want to have anything for Janice? Any discussions?
I would just say, reach out to me next year as we're getting up to senior expo. I do think that probably would be a valuable opportunity to spend time with the public and stuff. So I'd like to get a chance to be out there next year, so, yeah.
It's over fall break every year at the high school.
Real quick, Janice, what's the make on those vans? Are they Fords, Chrysler's?
They are Chrysler Voyagers. And they're affecting thousands, thousands of vehicles across the state. All our agencies are in the same, same boat as far as that goes.
This is something that's come up at Macon and a lot of the other area counties are having a similar experience.
Yeah.
I think for us, we were planning on getting rid of two of them that they were, they let us put back in service. So we're really only down one net vehicle. But the ones that we have in service are getting quite old and the mileage is quite up there. So we're anxious to get the three newer ones back in service.
So do I have a motion to approve Janice's twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five quarter three claim?
Move.
Second. There you go. Motion made second to approve the twenty-twenty-five third-quarter claim. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Is that all you need?
Oh, indeed. I am going to give her my request for the rest of our funding, county funding for this year. That's already, just so you know. Angie.
Thank you.
Don't we need two motions, one for the report and one for the claim for in-depth purposes?
In that, just technically, I think, but did I ask for the report and not the claim?
No, but we've always done both.
Both.
So I think just to be on the safe side to accept the report, I think would be that way we have it.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Yeah.
Her report?
So move. Second.
Motion made second to accept Janice's report for the older adult services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
When resources, Janice, oh, excuse me, Janice, Jennifer. They just want to take care of you. Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning. Steve, I have a request for sick fake.
Yeah, I guess I had that one coming.
I have a sick fake request for thirty days. The employee has met the requirements.
So you're comfortable with everything, everything's taken care of?
Yep.
Good work, okay.
All right, then I move that we approve the sick bank request as presented.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the sick bank request as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here from the Sheriff's Department?
Are about forty minutes early.
Way early.
However, though, I have you got, after reading through the request, Sean was favorable to the contract terms. That they met the requirements. I don't know, do we want to wait on the sheriff to come here and present, or do we want to move on?
And we, we, we can take.
If you're comfortable with that.
Everybody's uncomfortable.
We'll make the motion.
I move to approve the biopath agreement amendment as for the Sheriff's Department.
Another signatures on that?
One.
With Stan signing as the sole signature on the paperwork.
Second.
Would that be myself or the sheriff signing it?
It looks like the sheriff would sign it.
Of course.
Or the sheriff's office.
So we, we empower the sheriff to sign it.
With the sheriff as a sign in the contract.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the biopath agreement amendment with the sheriff signing on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, on behalf of, on, in behalf of the county. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Honor's report.
I have the November third minutes.
Move that we approve the minutes from the November third, twenty-twenty-five meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the minutes of the November third meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Have the accounts payable claims.
I move to approve the accounts payable claims.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the accounts payable claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last thing I have is payroll claims.
I move that we approve the payroll claims as presented.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the payroll claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is that everything you have, Madam Honor?
That is it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, I have a really curious question and I'm sure we wouldn't even know what this number is until probably a couple of months into next year, once everything's settled out. Do we ever get a report on the actual county spending compared to what the budget on the appropriations were after everything sells out at the end of the year?
There is a budget status report that we upload to the portal every month that you all have access to that tells you what's been spent, the percentages of what has been spent and what's still left in the appropriations. That would tell you the, what is still left. There are always account lines that have some money left over. We get to the end of the year, we get transfers and at the end of the year, there's always a report. I mean, the budget status report would give that information.
Okay. So the last, the last one in December should show the full stuff for the whole year or when?
Yes.
Okay.
Once we balance between the treasurer and the auditor's office, we have to balance monthly. By state board, we actually balance daily between the two offices, but we have to balance monthly. And once that's balanced, there's a budget status report that's emailed out to everybody and it's also put into the portal.
Okay.
So it does show that information.
So that, that last one, we get there at the end of the year, should have all of, all that data, okay?
Everything?
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, moving on, public comments. Anyone here have anything they would like to speak on? Anything on your mind? Seeing none? We'll move on. Commissioner items, we had the HWC, the Agreement Service for the Sheriff's Department to switching internet. And because of the, we sold that one contract, internet's being switched. And then there'll be three towers that will, will receive revenues from. Two of them will go back to the epic fund, the third one, I think, goes to the general, doesn't it, Angie?
Yes.
I thought.
And those agreements Sean should be preparing?
Yes.
And I believe those are going to be on for the next meeting?
Yes, when he gets back. Because we had to get him a dollar amount for what the normal charges are. And it's based on the height of the tower, so. This is the agreement we have with Hyperwave. To.
Are we approving those today?
We would have to approve the agreement today so they can get started. I will tell you, we met last week. I called a meeting and had Hyperwave and the people involved in the internet serviced the jail, the sheriff. And also had Michael Marshall there and myself to talk about this before we move forward to make sure everybody's on the same page. I didn't want to get halfway into the project, so I realized it's not what they thought it was. So everybody's in agreement, everybody's ready to go. It's just I'm not sure quite how quick Hyperwave will get started on this, but I think it's probably not too far off. I know they want to get it done. I will just tell you, the conversation strayed over into separating the Sheriff's Department from these buildings. And I told the sheriff, unless you have an issue with this, tired of talking about it, we're going to get it done.
Yep.
So hopefully first of the year, we're going to be able to, and Michael said he has the money in his budget. So we're going to separate. So if somebody does try to do a hack or a ransom, they can't go through one building and get to another. There's going to be firewall setup. So, but that's, that's not this. I know they're raised on this because I know they're going to try to get the other done also early next year.
Okay. So this is, this is replacing our existing service provider for the jail?
The internet service, yes.
Okay, well, I'd say that's a step in the right direction.
Well, this is basically because we sold, we don't have the same internet service now because we sold that agreement. Part of the agreement, we got free internet service on that tower. Since we sold that agreement, that all changed. So we had to go back out and get this new service. So like I say, we met last week, everybody was on board.
All right, well, I move that we approve the Hyperwave Ethernet Services Agreement for the jail.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the Hyperwave Ethernet Services Agreement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the annual compliance nepotism, uniform conflict of interest disclosure statements. And I believe we just have to receive these, correct?
Correct.
We've, we've received all of the pertinent ones, all right?
Yes, everybody, I will say all the elected officials. I got the last of the council last Monday, but everybody else had these to me either the same day I sent the email or that very next day. So this one, we get a lot of very good response out of everyone.
All right. Well, I move to accept the annual nepotism and uniform conflict of interest disclosure statements.
Second.
Motion made second to accept the annual compliance and nepotism, uniform conflict of interest disclosure statements. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And these, these are public documents, right?
They're uploaded to Gateway. They're actually the responsibility of each elected official. We, as the auditor's office, have taken this on to assist the other elected officials. So these are uploaded to Gateway where anyone can go see them.
Perfect, thank you.
And they're also recorded and they're in the clerk's office as well.
Next item is Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, the Second Amendment, sanctuary county. We discussed this last meeting. Sean, get anything back? There it is. Yeah. And I would just, I just say, I know there's concern by some. What this does here is this basically reinforces constitution. What it does not do is allow anybody that has committed a felony or any kind of crime. This is not supersede when the court tells them you can't have a weapon.
Right.
Okay, so anybody that's, that's, don't get nervous.
And it doesn't, and it doesn't leave away with federal background checks on transactions, that, that licensed dealers and things like that, yeah.
All this says is basically, Marshall County, this group of commissioners, we acknowledge and recognize your right under the Second Amendment of the Constitution, but has access to firearms. Any other comments?
It's pretty straightforward. I'd, I'd like to make the motion to pass Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen. And this is, we need three readings? This is not in ordinance? We don't need three readings on it, right?
Well, yes, you can suspend the rules and do it on both sides.
Resolution, you only need one reading. Resolution, you only need one reading.
Only need one for this, okay.
All right, yeah, so then I move, I move that we adopt Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen as presented.
Second.
Motion made second to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have FSS Technologies. It's a museum security upgrade. Do we have a copy of that? There it is. And I think what this is, basically, the, the museum has been, what little I know, it's been having some issues. But it's just their system's outdated. And this is not adding anything. I don't believe it's just an upgrade of what they have right now. And it's basically sixty-four hundred dollars.
And I imagine that's accounted for in their budget already?
I, is that, is that coming out of their budget or out of maintenance?
Believe, maintenance.
I believe maintenance paid.
Where that was coming, but I think that was in this year's budget.
He always wanted to talk to me about, let me know what's going on.
And this would be for one signature?
This is their security systems. They were having problems with false readings and stuff like that also. And it's just basically, it's, it's, it's past its time.
All right, so, so is that one signature for you, Stan?
It would be for Stan to sign and it will come via a docu-sign after approval, so once.
Matter of fact, I got it now. I just haven't signed it.
Okay, I move to approve the Marshall County Historical Society Security Upgrade in the amount of sixty-four hundred dollars with the commissioner board president being the sole signature.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the agreement FSS Technologies for the upgrades to the security systems at the museum for the amount of sixty-four hundred dollars with the president of the board signing on the board's behalf. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anyone have anything else?
I got an update with.
Quick, did we take public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
It was not.
I got an update with Bright Speed. I've finally worked my way to our regional, our regional representative with them as far as the guy who actually cuts work orders and oversees repairs and maintenance on their systems. I gave him what information of the folks who already contacted me and kind of what they're looking like. I told him what was going on with the county building for him to take a look at that. I discussed the whole copper wire situation and there's some misinformation or some conflicting reports between people. This gentleman says that they are in fact able to repair the copper lines out there. But what I need now from folks, because they're requesting names and addresses for people who are having problems so they can isolate where these issues might be in the county. So if anybody's having an issue with this that I have not heard from already, please send me an email to my county email address, which is adamf@co.martial.in.us with your name, your address, and a description of what's going on. And I will forward that over to the regional maintenance guy or supervisor for this area for him to start taking a look into. I like most of these requests sooner than later. I like to keep it to a timeframe of about three weeks. Therefore, I can get with that, that gentleman and put more pressure to hold them accountable for what they're doing on their end. Now, as far as consumer advocating and things like that for different services, we do have multiple services in the county. We got a multitude of internet service providers right now. So this process hasn't been advocating for one service or another. It's more than less trying to hold one of our service providers accountable to the service they're giving to our customers in the county. And that goes for our services we have here in the building. And once I got, got them to admit and admit to the fact that they're staying in the county and the region, they need to be held accountable to some, some degree on that. And that's pretty much what I was aiming for on this. It wasn't to promote any specific services, basically to hold accountability just to a provider in our county. And trying to make sure they're offering what they say they're going to offer to our consumers. Anyway, again, anybody that's having an issue with their Bright Speed and it's been ongoing, please send me an email at my email address, adamf@co.martial.in.us with your name, address, and the problems that you're having. And then we'll see what kind of resolution we can come from, from that.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for all that work. Also, I got to tag in on what you're saying here. Thank you for all that work. Also, uh, kind of tagging on what you're saying here. We do have another company coming into the county looking at the service problems we've had over this building, so there will be, uh, spokes, another proposal.
Yeah.
But I just haven't heard yet anything back, so Billy's taking care of that and maintenance, so.
Yep.
You got anything?
I got nothing else today.
You got anything else?
Uh, not, not right now. I'm actually thinking it's kind of a good Monday so far.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I guess I could, motion made second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I appreciate you just saying send it to me.
What's that?